In compliance with Chapter 551, open meetings of the Texas Government Code, a call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, June 26, 2025, at 7:53 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at Austin ISD's central office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum and Estown Broadband, and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us again. Our next item is Committee Reports. We have posted written committee reports as an attachment to this item on our Board Doc agenda. This includes a committee report for the Board Policy Committee and the Austin Education Fund. The next item is the Superintendent's Report. Under Lone Star Governance rules, this time is not considered student outcome time, although time highlighting achievement of students aligned to our scorecard would count towards student outcome minutes. We will be highlighting some other things that our students have accomplished, and we have scheduled 15 minutes for this update. Superintendent Segura?
Thank you, President Boswell. And this is going to be a very brief superintendent update. You know, as we close out the school year, I just wanted to take a moment to thank our students, families, and staff, and this Board for everybody's dedication and partnership. I'm incredibly proud of the hard work that happened in every classroom throughout the year, and the support that's around our students every day. To our seniors that graduated, congratulations. And to all of our returning students, we look forward to welcoming you back in the fall. Wish everyone a safe, restful, everybody, please, please, please get rest, an enjoyable summer. That concludes my superintendent update.
Thank you. That was very speedy. I would love to take just a moment with, as a point of order, to say we had more than 4,000 students graduating. It was incredibly joyful to celebrate our students, have a chance to celebrate with the families and other people who love our students. We had one principal ask the first time high school, the first generation high school graduates in the class to stand. I would say at least a third of the students stood, including the valedictorian and salutatorian.
Yep, that was cool.
Really, all the things we're talking about tonight, our budget, our student achievement, all of it, is leading toward that kind of success for our students. And just thank you for everyone in our community who's part of that. It was really, really joyful and meaningful. And every trustee spent time celebrating our graduates, which was really fantastic. So our next item is Legally Required. It's a notice of our Intruder Detection Audit. This time is neutral under Lone Star Governance because it is legally required. And we've scheduled five minutes. And Superintendent Segura, can you please introduce the item?
Yes, thank you, President Boswell. I'd like to welcome up Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer of General Relations and Board Service, to share the Notice of Intruder Detection Audit Update.
Thank you, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Segura. So as you know, the state created new rules for Intruder Detection Audits where the state actually goes and checks campuses with exterior doors and then also interior doors. We've given these updates at most of our voting meetings, so I won't give all the details. But we do want to share that for this year, we had an additional seven campuses audited since we last met, which actually means that all of our regular campuses got audited this year. We have some special campuses that necessarily are not always included, although some of them were audited as well. Out of the seven that were conducted, one campus did have a finding that is included as backup in the executive section of this agenda item for the trustees. And we can discuss any concerns with that in executive session as allowed for under the education code. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reach. And I'll say, the Safety and Security Committee has reviewed this, and our trend is to have fewer and fewer findings on our audits. So really appreciate all the work that's happening on campuses. Trustees, any questions or clarification for open meeting, knowing that we also have the open ask in executive session? All right, very good. Thank you. We will now move to our public testimony for items on the consent agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated Austin ISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up and speak in person or to audio-record their remarks. Tonight, we have no caller signed up to speak in person, and we have four recorded messages. We will now play those recorded messages for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
Marie, I'm calling on 7.4 Turnaround Plans. The campus intervention teams listed on school improvement webpage claim that principals were included as required by law. The principals were never included in planning or in even one conversation. There are also no principals for these schools. We do not have sufficient staff for these schools, and tabs are required to include the staff and their credentials. The community meetings were not sent out to the community. Principals were prevented from sending out notices without approval from the district. The district did not give approval or send out the notices. I emailed everybody in Austin ISD to try to get the notices sent out, but AISD was on holiday. Limited and very prescribed engagement, followed with hand-selected invitees, but this was also not the required engagement. The turnaround plans are de minimis. I believe we tore apart these school communities, and it has been heartbreaking to watch. Please keep W. Lee, please keep the DOBE leader as either academic director in school improvement office or associate principal to give this school a chance at success in rebuilding its programs that all the kids and staff called about and the district promised to protect but did not. Thank you.
Marie, 7.3, the district is still using or requiring the use of technology and apps that are not monitored by Gaggle. This was supposed to be a violation of district policy. 7.5, I've communicated extensively with AISD about its programming for the youngest of our students. There appear to be no standards and no oversight into our Head Start, early childhood, and ECSE programs. No curriculum being used at some campuses, inappropriate settings, no engagement, no peer models, no instruction. We're housing children starting at age three, including those with disabilities. We need to improve, not just box check a compliance plan due to failures and abuse. Unfortunately, after more than a year of advocacy, I have not seen movement. 12.3, dyslexia services and AISD, we need cults at every campus, including secondary, an initiative Austin ISD endeavored for approximately one year before it disappeared. We cannot just offer one dyslexia program to children. It has to be individualized. Take flight requires a cult. Many campuses do not have cults, few do, meaning only about five kids on handful of campuses can receive anything other than reading by design, which is inferior and inappropriate for some students. 12.4, we do not have a GT program at Austin ISD, even though we say we do. 12.9, changes for district staff at magnets and apps is positive and equitable change. 12.10, technology policy, other uses, the section for other uses, if it's not required by law, absolutely required by law, this should be stricken from the policy. Also, the district needs to develop policy around what will be allowed as campus consequences, which should include many reminders and be student-centered. We see other districts doing DAEP and really inappropriate consequences, and the district needs to manage that at a district level to ensure that there's appropriate consequences for this new change that includes lots of reminders for our kids. 12.13, we do not have autism training, and PDU should include specific autism training from an appropriately qualified and credentialed provider and not a minimal compliance training by a law firm. Staff need proper training and restraints as well from a student-centered and appropriate qualified and credentialed provider. Please make sure that happens. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Raoul Longoria, and I'm here to express my deep concern about the decision to remove the Assistant Director of Community Engagement from their role, especially at this critical moment for Austin ISD. We're facing imminent school consolidation, an emotionally charged and complex process that will directly affect families, students, and staff across the district. These transitions require trust, transparency, and authentic community engagement. There is no one more qualified or better prepared than this person to lead that effort. They have earned the trust of our community, not with slogans, but with consistent action, cultural humility, and a deep understanding of how to communicate across differences. Removing them from this process undermines the very trust you'll need to navigate these changes. Families deserve someone who will listen, shows up, and follows through, and this person has done just that. For the sake of a smoother, more humane consolidation process, I urge you to re-insist the Assistant Director. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our public testimony. Thank you to everyone who took the time to call in and share their input with us. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications about these comments, this testimony? All right, thank you. As a reminder to the public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the Board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So our next item is an update on Mendez Middle School and Third Future, our 1882 partnership. As part of our 1882 agreement with Third Future at Mendez, we've asked the partner to provide quarterly updates. This conversation is not considered student outcome time under the rules of Lone Star Governance, although we will be talking some about student outcomes. And for people who are hearing that we have added this to our agenda, that has been a request from trustees for real clarity about where our time falls on each agenda item. And part of what Lone Star Governance hopes we will do as well is to help inform our community about Lone Star Governance. So I hope we're offering some clarity, not just for the trustees, but also for our community on the rules of our agreed order and this piece of it. So Principal Willis and Assistant Principal Miranda have provided a recorded presentation. Thank you for sharing that with us. It's included in our agenda item on Board Docs, and they shared a presentation with backup data to go along with that. And we have scheduled 15 minutes for today's discussion. And Mr. Segura, can you please introduce our burners?
Yes, I'd love to. And we have Mr. Zach Craddock, Chief Executive Officer. We have Elizabeth Miranda?
Miranda.
Miranda, Principal, and then Syston?
Yes, or Marie, if you prefer.
Okay, Marie. All right, Marie Lipsy. Did I get that right? All right, Assistant Principal. Well, thank you for joining us. And as just mentioned, I appreciate the video, and so I'll hand it over to the Board for asking any questions.
Thank you, Madam President, Trustees, Superintendent Segura. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here again. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustees. Do we have any questions? Trustee Gonzalez?
Hi, good evening. I just had one really quick question. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciated the additional pictures. Those are really nice to see, all the different things that are happening at Mendez. I did want to ask if you might, at this point, have preliminary projections on your incoming sixth graders for next year. I know that you had mentioned that you've been doing a lot of coordination with the incoming elementary schools, that there have been tours at Mendez. I wondered at this point if you had an idea?
Yes. So we successfully completed tours from Wydane, Langford, Houston, and Rodriguez Elementary. We had a lot of fun doing it. So the projected number for sixth grade is 182. Overall, with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we're projected 401. Okay? Yep.
But we're projecting conservatively, budgeting at 350.
Thank you, Secretary Gonzalez. Any further questions? Right, thank you all for, oh, yes, Trustee Hunter, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez actually asked my question, but I have a question. So when you say you've projected, are these students that have used, are, does Mendez use enroll often? Okay, are these students that have used enroll often to indicate their desire to attend Mendez?
So these are the ones that we already have on our ECST platform, Trustee Hunter. So these are the ones that are already registered with Mendez. Either they're coming in from the elementary schools into Mendez because they're zoned, or they've registered from another area. But yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what was the number again, one more time? I'm sorry.
Sixth grade is 182. Yep, seventh grade is 116, eighth grade 103. So overall, 401 total.
Okay, and then perhaps Mr. Craddock can answer this, because maybe I'm not remembering. Has Mendez, since you guys have come in, had sixth grade?
No, ma'am, we have not. We've only had seventh and eighth. Yes, ma'am.
And so knowing your program, dyads, and all those sorts of things, are you all making any sort of additions or changes? Because they will come in expecting, you know, and then we want to hold on to them. So have you done any sort of changes for those sixth graders that are coming in?
You mean foundational changes to the program?
Not foundational changes to the program, but let's say band, like orchestra. Those are things that we don't normally see with you guys, or they're like kind of in the dyads with different things like that.
That's correct.
So I'm saying, are there any changes to that sort of?
Yes, we've had to expand dyad program to accommodate the different grade levels, so we have that. We will have band with Mr. Shortly. We've had to reconfigure this summer because of ALC coming in, and that's fine. They've been great. The entire team has been fantastic to work with. So we will have the whole upstairs completely filled, as well as you come into the right, the downstairs, that wing as well. But yes, we've had, we have had to make more offerings to accommodate 182 more kids.
And then finally, I guess this will be more to the superintendent and to our administrative staff as far as Mendez is concerned, as we are making these efforts to uphold constraint two. What efforts can the Board do to continue to support that throughout the district, including Mendez?
As far as constraint two on our goal, yeah, you know, the Board, you know, has been, I think, immensely supportive. You know, for us as an organization, you know, I think continuing to collaborate with the team here, you know, recognizing that, you know, there is going to be a shift next year with sixth grade coming in. You know, our sixth grade students at those schools, for the last couple of years, have had a different experience. You know, we, as a system, have not been the best at supporting sixth graders in elementary when we did it so quickly. And so as we support our community transitioning our students back into the middle schools, just making sure we're aligned, we're communicating. You know, if we see transfers to other schools, like, you know, we saw many students go to Bettechuk the last couple of years because there wasn't a sixth grade at Mendez or just wanted a different option. So we'll continue to support and collaborate. As far as from the Board, I think it's providing clear direction, as you always have, and continuing to engage along the way.
Then I would have a request of both of you and the liaison with Mendez, the principal also, is that that communication with parents continues, that we keep building that, that our expectations for parents are clear, and so that they know how they can best support their students. So thank you.
Would the Board like for us to be engaging in the month of July with our rising sixth
grade parents through town halls? We can do that. So we can, we usually always do this for new schools, such as we did when we opened and partnered. We've done outreach with them, but if it would please the Board and Superintendent, we could do community town halls, the two, maybe three in the month of July, so that we can get them in prior to back-to-school night, July 31st.
I think that's something you can coordinate with.
Yeah, we can, yeah, let's have a conversation about, you know, how to support the community and engage so that we're aligned. You know, July can be difficult with families taking breaks, and so we want to make sure it's a productive conversation. So let's get together and we can talk about it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Trustee Singh.
Hi, thanks for being here. I wanted to ask, I know enrollment is something that you, and is something that you guys have been working on, and, you know, clearly with, you know, bringing the sixth graders in. But I also was curious to know about, if you have any data or understanding of how many of your seventh graders are coming back for eighth grade at Mendez?
So our eighth grade, it's pretty much staying the exact same. All of our students coming back, with the exception of maybe, I can think off the top of my head, five, just because they're relocating. But other than that, we're expecting our babies back. Yeah.
That's great.
Yes.
I mean, I think that's a big improvement from what you've had previously, correct?
Yes, yes.
And what would you attribute that to?
Reaching out to the community. And I think, I think all of us really understand is that it takes a village, okay? We can't do it on our own. So we engage our parents just that much more, Trustee Singh. And I think that's what's going to make us successful, or continue that success, is just continue to engage those parents in what we're doing, and what their students are doing, what they're learning, and how they're learning.
Great.
And I'd like to add, I think a lot of the credit goes to these two ladies sitting next to me. You know, Ms. Lipsy's been there since year one. So every single seventh and eighth grader will know her. She's taught them all English Language Arts. And Ms. Miranda's been consistent as well, started as ELD teacher and then moved in, emerged a bilingual teacher, and then moved into the Assistant Principal role. So I think it's that consistency in leadership and building the relationships with the kids and maintaining a strong culture while keeping the academic standards high. So I give a lot of credit to them, and Mr. Willis, our outgoing principal. That team, and not to mention a couple of other people, such as Ms. Aguilar, our teacher leader, and there's many other people, but these two get a lot of credit.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate your presentation and your presence and your work. Thank you. So our next item is an update on school consolidations. This conversation is not considered student outcome time under the rules of Lone Star Governance. We have scheduled 30 minutes for the next item. And Superintendent Segura, can you please introduce it for us?
Thank you, President Boswell. The team and I will present an update on the consolidation process. I have joining me Christine Steenport, Chief of Operations, and Dr. Rachel French, Director of Planning and our Project Manager. So with that, I'll hand it over to the team.
Good evening, Board. Tonight is our next update on the school consolidation process and where we are in the timeline. I'll move quickly. You've seen the school consolidations project roadmap many times before. We are here with the blue circles, ending the data collection and creation phase, and now entering the analysis and refinement phase. So you've also seen this before. I just want to remind us about the tool. We have two parts. The first part's going to involve the data rubric, where Dr. French will go into this more shortly. And this is going to highlight the misalignments, if you will. As a reminder, the school scores on this list will not directly lead to a school consolidations list. I just want to be very clear about that. The second part of our tool is what we're going to do to look deeper into the contextual analysis, to understand not only the lived experiences of these schools and this campus, but also the implications and feasibility of any consolidation scenario. All of this is going to be updated and informed by our community, by our community engagement, which we have just finished a lot of that this week, and we will continue to deep dive into workshops the week of July 14th, 15th, and 16th. Just, this is another timeline phase again, and just wanted to kind of highlight, we're entering phase two. We'll finalize your Board priorities. Like, like I also said, we conducted those community open houses, and we really looked at getting feedback in regards to program realignment, transfers, and boundary. And the data rubric scoring and raw data will be published on August 14th, as you can see here in red, on the school consolidations webpage, and we'll beginning, we'll begin to develop scenarios and campus-level engagement around those potential scenarios. So now we'll go into the data rubric overview.
Hi, good evening. This is a slide you've seen from the previous board meeting, and if you want to click ahead through the transitions. We're not going to dive into this. You've seen it before, but just as a reference point, I'm going to be providing some slides on the specific data points. There's a lot on these slides. I will not be reading it all to you. You have it as reference. They are the same slides that we have gone through with the community in the various engagements over the last two weeks. We will be diving deeper into them in July, because as you will see, it is far too much for anyone to just process in one sitting. And so we are putting it all out there for the community to read and absorb, so we can have a more fruitful, in-depth conversation, both in person and virtually, in July. So this next slide just taught, I think, did we?
No, that's a good one.
Oh, yes, okay. So this is new. This is just showing you, new to y'all. This is, we did show this to the community of just proposed weights of the various data points. All of the weights are driven through logic that is presented on the following slides in terms of how much we think this will impact the cost savings or result in us being able to better provide a well-resourced, well-rounded experience at our campuses. And so you'll see here the weights. This is all subject to y'all's feedback, as well as feedback that we'll have with the community in July. So this is our first proposal. And so I'll go through each of the data points quite quickly. As you may recall, we are going to be weighting the overall score based on the number, the students that attend the campus, and this is for a variety of reasons. Oh, you can, yep. And so the support and resource index is our measure of who are we impacting, and how can we meaningfully allow this data rubric to adjust for that, and also acknowledge that a lot of the other data points are impacted by historic and current inequities in the school district. And so this is one metric of many for us to check that as we go through our process. And then the next following slides, I'll just briefly define them. And again, we really want to spend time hearing from y'all and having a conversation. July will be the moment that we really dive deeper into these. We will be looking at utilization rates, so how full or empty is a building, based on how many kids we could fit, how many kids are currently attending. So it's really a percentage. This is our largest driving weight that we're proposing in our data. The next is looking at facility condition, so the quality of the building, warm, safe, and dry. We are adjusting for the proposed bond work. It is kind of the second tier of weight at 25%. We can offset a lot of costs in terms of thinking through building quality. They're a big cost driver. Next slide is educational suitability. So this is effectively the types of spaces in our buildings, how big are they, are they suited to teaching and learning as we want to see it? We also know teachers can do really great things in not great spaces. So that's why you'll see that the proposed weight is low. It's important, but not as important as some of the other factors. Next slide introduces the first of two cost data points. They're both at a per-student level, so we can better compare campuses. So it's really taking overall costs divided by the number of kids that are enrolled in the certain school year we're looking at. First is about building and operations, so utilities, rentals, actually making, keeping the facility moving. And this next data point is on academic support, so staff salaries, materials, the things that get the instruction, instruction going. So that was a lot. I'm going to toss it back to Chief Steenport to talk through the survey.
Thank you, Dr. French. So I'm just going to be doing a very abridged version of the few key, few key takeaways from the survey. As you can see here, our first initial response rate from our community, our staff, and our caregivers, we were actually really happy to see such a great representation of, and response rate from those, from those participants for our first survey. We collected 14,024 surveys across Austin ISD communities, and we sent unique requests for surveys to primary caregivers for each student. So if you have a student in Austin ISD, if you have multiple students in ISD, you might have received multiple surveys for those specific students. Because of this, we were able to calculate a response rate for the groups, as you can see there, for the caregivers. It was 12, 12%, and then also we collected for staff of 20.55%. You can also toggle through those, and I'll get into that in a little bit, by types and locations. I wanted to showcase this. This is the interactive dashboard that you can find on the webpage. I want to orient you a little bit to this. This is exactly what is on the webpage. We invite you, if you haven't already, to play around with it. You can toggle between different page views on the left and different data sets, and on the right, you can filter different options and drill down to each level, campus location by trustee district and other options. And then at the top, you can simply hit reset, and you'll be able to kind of view dynamic charts in live view. And so you can select different views and start over again. It's really fun. Secondly, we asked participants to rate the importance of 20 school factors. So in blue, you will see all factors were rated as either very or extremely important. And in red, factors with the highest level of importance across all participant types. As you can see, those are academic excellence, property values, strong leaders, and student relationships. The next here, participants were able to select up to two of the 20 factors to represent their top concerns in relation to consolidations, and two factors where they see potential benefit from consolidation. So the top concerns for all participants included quality teachers and academic excellence. And then participants also indicated the potential benefits, along with balance of resources, varying perspectives, program choice, strong enrollment, and extracurricular programs. We also, lastly, I know I've mentioned this a few times, you can look at that survey on that dashboard live on our website here, austinisd.org/consolidate. And we also have Dr. Jay Brown here from the Research and Analytics Team, if there are specific questions that you may have.
We did add to that, include a feedback form with the recent round of community engagement that did include some more free response. I know that was important to y'all in the community. That is also available on our website. So those that were unable to attend the sessions, they can still access the slides and the recording and all those, all that information, and provide their feedback to us in that way. So that is up and running. We are also going to be sending you a board-specific form, similar to the one y'all have now, to get your feedback on the data rubrics. So digest this over the next week, and we'll be sending that to y'all when we get back from break.
And Dr. French, I think one thing that'll be helpful to share with the Board is just the update and the calculation methodology for utilization. You know, I think it's important that we kind of share broadly kind of what is used to build that up and how it might be different than it was in years past.
Yes, great question. We've gotten feedback from really in-tune community members, as well as from our principals, about really wanting to make sure that if we're using the utilization percentage, which is basically the how full or empty is a building, and that is based on how many kids we can fit. So we need to be sure we have a solid number on the how many kids can we fit? So the capacity that we're talking through. And so we've been working with our principals to make sure that our methodology, which we introduced back in 21, 22 school year, was sound. One key difference, or not even difference, it was already included in there, was how we treat special education across the board. So you can fit intentionally. You don't want as big of a class if it's supporting special education. And so, but we were not including that when special education was offered in portables, for example, because our capacity, we only are including the main building. We don't include portables in terms of how many kids we are fitting in a school. However, because of that, it was artificially making our capacities not apples-to-apples because some campuses were including special education in our calculation and others were not. And so we worked with the principals to agree that we are going to standardize that. So regardless of how many special education courses are offered or where they're currently offered, we are assuming that, and there's a baseline that we'll share with the public and we can share with y'all of how many per school size we are accounting for. But it does effectively lower the capacity that y'all may have seen previously. So a campus that might have held 500 students might now be the same exact building, but the capacity will actually look a bit lower because we are being more accurate with how our facilities are being staffed and how we want them to operate to best serve our students. And that will also impact the total of empty seats that you might see us presenting. At the beginning of this process, we were stating that we had 25,000 empty seats throughout the district. After we've gone through the efforts of being more accurate with how we're representing that, it's now 21,500. So still very substantial. We have a lot of room to fill and opportunities there. But I just wanted to make sure y'all and the public are aware that this has been a process that we've been engaging with the principals. And there's going to be a final layer of them kind of confirming the number throughout July. And in August, when that rubric is published with all the scores, it will be kind of the final number that shouldn't change again for the foreseeable future. Thank you both for all of this. Trustees, do we have questions? Trustee Singh.
Thank you so much. This is really fascinating information on the survey. It's so interesting to see. I am happy to see academic excellence and, you know, quality teachers as being like the two big things. And, okay, good, we're in the right business. People are like that. So I think that really brings to mind for me, you know, we're calling this a school consolidation conversation, which it is. I think one of my observations, this is not really a question, this is just some observation, is I know because of all the conversations we have that school consolidations are not the end game. Like, and I know that you understand that, we're not just doing this for the sake of consolidating schools. There are some, you know, bigger goals that we are trying to achieve, maybe I call it the end game. In my mind, we're doing all of this for a few big reasons. One, the most immediate reason is to save money. Like, quite frankly, that's the budget. We just had this huge budget presentation. We are in a dire situation and we know that. You know, there could be a justification there is saving money. The second thing is ensuring high-quality neighborhood schools with a clearly articulated list of what any parent might be able to expect if their child attends any elementary, middle, or high school in AASD. That's something I've been hearing over and over again in these community sessions. And so I think it's really critical for us to define what that is. Like, we have our scorecard, yes, but that doesn't really tell you, like, the how part of it, like, what a family can expect. The scorecard is something that the board created that allows us to judge the success of the district at a very high level. But that's not really what a parent is thinking about when they walk into the school. They want to know, do we have highly qualified teachers? Do we have, you know, counselors? Do we have certain services and arts activities and ballet, frolgo, and like all of these things? And so I think it's, I'm hoping that that becomes a more prominent part of this discussion because we ought to know what we're aiming for here. Again, I think another thing that we've got to consider as we're thinking about, you know, what Dr. Foster was saying earlier about the vertical and the horizontal alignment. It applies to all of our schools, not just our three middle schools that we're turning around, but all of us. And that means we've got to step back and really understand, like, thinking about all of our application-based schools and our special programs, are those truly equitably spread throughout the district? And how do we, I think we want to make sure that every child has access to that, but it might mean that we have to make some big changes to make that happen. Again, I don't know if, like, we have the courage to do that as a board, but this seems like a good time to do that. If we're going to, like, we're already going to make people mad, like, you know? And so let's just actually do the right thing in the process of all of that. And I don't know what that right thing is. I just know that that needs to be a big part of the conversation. I think this is an opportunity to really create these aligned vertical teams. And of course, in the process of all of this, keeping in mind what TEA rules and guidelines might be that we're working within, like, I don't know if we can consolidate two afraid of schools. Like, I just, you know, things like that. So like, these are all the things that we've got to consider. So I just, I guess, I think that as we continue having these conversations, and I thought the staff has been doing a great job, by the way. I know it's hard, but I have really seen you guys really sharing the situation we're in and trying to get all the pieces together. But I think one thing that can really be helpful for all of us is to be super clear about the end game. What are we trying to do with all this and start every conversation with that? I just keep hearing that over and over again because if we step away from the big picture, then we are going to get, we are creating the conditions for infighting and things like that. And we've always got to bring it back to, what are we trying to do for all of our kids? And especially the ones who are most dependent on our systems. And so that's, so I don't know if the tool, as I see it, where it's like really jumping out at me, like, some of these bigger picture items. Like, I know you have on the timeline, you have like, oh, we're going to talk about boundary changes. But the boundary change is not really part of the tool. So I'm like, how can we make that integrated? How do we, like, really define the, like, where is the conversation on the academic vision? So we know what we are trying to build for each school. So now's your chance.
Well, so what I'll say first is, you know, all of this is connected. The consolidation process, you know, trying to get a balance to be, I mean, our budget to be balanced and healthy to provide what we need in our schools, the accountability challenges that we know we have to, you know, own and also operate in, in alignment with our values, like, it's all connected. These are not independent. And I think that whenever we take on large tasks like this, they feel isolated, but they're not. And to your point, you know, what is the end game? Well, the end game is to have a vibrant school system that has the resources needed to meet our students' needs, wherever those students are and whatever lived experiences those students have. Right now, we don't have those resources. And I talk to principals and I hear often, Matthias, you know, can I just give you $100,000? Or, you know, what can we do to help kind of reduce the pressures of the budget? And I tell them, no, the opposite needs to happen. We need to figure out how push. No, 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 I can't, no, because it's, I want that to stay in our schools. You know, but it's a shared understanding of how dire things are. But to your point, you know, we absolutely have to define, you know, what it should look like in every school and resources we should have. One of the challenges I think we had when we started this is, in years past, one of the things that occurred was we would maybe not be criticized, but the process would be criticized because maybe we were hiding the consolidation word, right? And we were not being transparent about what was going to happen or what was very likely to happen. And so, and it's also having a conversation with the board as to which thing comes first. You know, academic alignment or programmatic alignment, you know, do you refine when an opportunity exists after consolidation is identified? Or would you flip it and say, we're willing to consolidate, you know, to improve programmatic alignment? Right? Those are two different things. And so we're trying to develop a process that identifies the opportunity for consolidation and then say, okay, now that we have this, based on things that we can agree on, what adjustments can we make, boundaries, transfers, otherwise? Now, what I've heard from community and what I've heard from trustees is similar to what you're saying now, is, you know, we need to kind of create a more balanced approach and talk about what we want to be and where we need to go. And so we had conversations earlier this week about that. But it is all very much tied together. Right now, like Title I going down by 25%, which largely funded our instructional coaches, which directly impacts student outcomes. Like, I don't have the ability to find the dollars over, you know, the number of schools that we have to provide those. And so if we agree that every school should have an instructional coach or every school should have this number of content interventionists or this number of teachers or these types of supports, or maybe it's fine arts or athletics, whatever it might be, that is an important step in the process. And I agree with you, it needs to be brought forward and emphasized in a real way as we move forward. So that feedback is very helpful.
Yeah, and I think, like, I would go as far as saying, like, can we put that in the timeline, on the roadmap? Can we actually say, like, we are going to have our academic vision and core experience articulated by August or whatever date, just so that we are holding ourselves accountable to that?
And that's feedback I've gotten from trustees, so I think we absolutely can do that. I do want to be really clear about, when we say academic vision, you know, in previous efforts to introduce that effort, it is a, almost a year-long effort, right? In a traditional sense, if you were to, you know, really go through a traditional process. So we have to think about, you know, what process could we go through that builds it up in a way that we can agree as, you know, kind of the, you know, the effort to take us all the way through this? Because if we take nine months to build out a vision, it's not going to work. And so I think we need to hear from trustees, you know, what could work? Because there's a lot of work that's already happened, right? Through the LRP, through the equity assessment, through just y'all's shared understanding of what's happening in the community and our community itself. So I think we can incorporate that as feedback we've gotten. But I just want you to know it's going to be a modified structure because we don't have nine months.
No, I agree. I think we could whip one out based on all the work that we've, like, we have our equity assessment. Like, that right there already took a year or longer to do. We have, I know Dr. Holly had created something that was really, I think originally came out with conversations from, maybe with trustee Hunter, I can't recall exactly, but it was really looking at what our African-American students needed and centering that. And I just remember seeing some kind of document. So I think we have the pieces. It's just like putting it, and actually at our last board meeting, we had, there was a link to our numeracy framework. And I was like, oh, okay, that exists. Like, that's awesome. So like, I think we already have a lot of the pieces. I think it's just, we got to have something, even if it's not like a perfect year-long typical thing. But like, we got to say, this is what we're aiming for. And so that's going to really help, like, ease the conversation and the decision-making because like, if we know what our North Star is, then we can say, like, this is going to help us get there. Just like with our scorecard, like, we know we're doing these things because we've got all these goals to meet. And so like, we kind of pivot and think of this more from like a, like a slightly, like, planning, operational lens as well, which we don't normally do with our scorecard stuff, but it's kind of blending the two together. So I hope my goal one day, once we get report cards home to every parent, my next goal is can we, like, figure out a way to kind of have, like, we have the ESA and the FSA for every campus. I feel like we have more, I can, I have more information on how our campus facilities are than on how our campus programs are. There's no, like, easy way for me to assess that beyond star scores. And we know that that's not the whole story. So I just hope as a result of all this, we have a real opportunity to kind of tease those factors out as well.
And we have to figure out a way to bring everybody together in a way that aligns with LSG. So it's like, there's a lot of constraints that we're operating in.
But I do appreciate, like, I'mma hold us to having a date somewhere on this timeline for having an academic vision, or whatever you want to call it, like, that well-articulated thing. Unless, I mean, I know I can't just be like, you need to do this, but, you know, this is an opportunity for other trustees to kind of, if y'all feel like that's something, I'd love to hear it too.
Thank you.
I really appreciate trustee Singh's bit of call for goal clarity and saying, you know, save money, preserve this type of programming, or make this type of programming available all. Like, there's, it's, I like, I want to speak to a physics professor right now and the many-body problem. You know, so you have two things and they're orbiting. We can predict what's going to happen. You add one more body and then it's chaotic. The ability to predict an outcome just becomes immensely complex. You add another body, it becomes more complex. This is like a many-body problem where it's going to be really difficult to come up with a really nice, elegant solution. And having goal clarity doesn't resolve everything. In fact, it ensures complexity, but it's helpful. If we have goal clarity, we have a North Star. And one of the things it's going to do, and I guess this is my, like, multi-week tirade or something on this, it's going to make us acknowledge tensions that exist that we have refused to deal with. And you have these tensions around, so you take our turnaround plans. You have tensions around a neighborhood school and giving people the choice to go to other schools against the reality that that has an impact on the neighborhood school. So if we acknowledge family autonomy to go wherever, that's great and that's a value, but it has an implication. And then it's up to a board led by a community to decide where we're going to land on this. And I think we need to have many difficult, there's probably four or five areas where there's very difficult decisions that have been kicked down the road for decades or worse yet, decided in favor of inequity for decades. And I know Brandy, he'll say, never waste a crisis. This is a never-waste-a-crisis moment where we're in it, we're in it deep, might as well, like, deal with some things now and make some decisions about feeder patterns and make some decisions about equitable access to programming and make some decisions about application-based programs versus neighborhood schools. I'm just, I'm terrified because I've never seen a consolidation or closure or whatever you want to call these plans. Inevitably, they lean, if they lean on efficiency and efficiency and effectiveness and money-saving is heavily weighted, you know where that goes. That goes to this side of the track, getting screwed every time. And I understand our need for fiscal responsibility, but we're weighing that in the context of educational equity. And that balancing act, we got to make decisions about. Because if we do what in my mind would be right, there'd be a whole lot of powerful people that would be very, very, very unhappy and vocally unhappy and effective in their ability to mobilize. And they would little by little by little switch where we landed when we were just driven by the equity lens with the fiscal responsibility as part of it. So I'm terrified. And I won't, I mean, I'm just going to say this as early as I need to say it. I will not support anything that ends up on the equity lens screwing over one side of town more than another. I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to do it. And that puts an onus on the administration because we're going to have to be all thought partners in something really creative. Because the only thing I will support will be something that enhances the educational experience of those who have been historically deprived and historically marginalized. So apology for not having a great, smart question around this stuff, but I think it is worthwhile to state that clearly, explicitly, boldly, early on in the process. And when I say that, I'm only challenging, channeling several thousand people who feel this way with even a greater depth of history and a greater depth of experience when these things get raised up. So it's early on, and I applaud and I'm grateful to the administration for this thoughtful rollout and thinking through every step. rollout and thinking through every step. But every time, every day's gonna get harder, and, and I, I'm gonna need to see the creativity and the commitment to educational equity lived out in, through that creativity before I end up being supportive.
Thank you. Trustee Hunter?
I'll be quick, I just wanna do a clarity check with you, Dr. French and Chief Steenport, because there were a lot of big words used, but if somebody was in the kitchen, I promise you, all they heard is, you're gonna close underused schools. That's all they heard you say, even though you explained it. So, I just wanna go over it again, so that we can be really clear. What you gave us were data points, and even with those data points, whatever that score is, does not determine what is going to happen, because there's also a contextual, cultural, historical lens that we will be using. And so, we've had conversations in the work that we're doing, and I just want the community to know, as well as Trustee Foster, you know, is saying it, we are talking about those things. There are schools that are small for a reason, right? And if there's something we could do, they're being creative, like, you know, a school within a school, we don't know, but we are looking at that, and because, yeah, the majority of this group, save a couple people, lived through the first one, right? Some of us were sitting here, some of us were sitting there, and either side, we can agree, it was not done well, right? And so, we, we are using that historical knowledge, and that pain, and that frustration, with the current crisis of fiscal, like, devastation, capped off by a takeover possibility, and all of that to come out with something beautiful? And again, Brandy is right, never waste an opportunity. Trustee Whitely Chu said, we could have an opportunity to do something really good, really well, something that should've been done years ago, right? And it's, do we have the wherewithal as a board to do those things now? And so, I just wanna do a clarity check with the community one more time. We said that these are data points used not to make a final decision, but to contribute to the context and the culture and all these other bits and pieces before you bring anything to the board. Is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you for that.
Okay, so I think I said it enough for people, because maybe somebody was changing the baby, and all they heard was, underutilization, right? It's like, what does that mean? And then, finally, I really, you and I had this conversation, yes, no, I don't even know what day, what's the day, Thursday? Was it Tuesday? Monday? I don't even know what day. It was sometime this week, and what we talked about was, and a parent mentioned it, to my knowledge, let me use, let me preface that, there is no intention of flim-flamery, right? That we're not trying to do that, right? That is not our intention, but we are baked in a system where we use a lot of edgespeak and half the time, Ateas is like, that, I was like, what does that mean? Right? Because he's speaking from, like, it's a function of time, what does that mean? Right? And so, he's teaching me all of these terms, I'm using edgespeak or whatever, and I'm like, oh, that means this. We have to do the same thing for our community, is when we say, and our community is such that not everyone will be like, what? Um, what does that mean? But, so, we have to check ourselves and be like, dot, 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 just like when we were in school, and there was like, that means, in parentheses, not that our community is not intelligent or smart, but they don't live in this, right? It's like the fish, right? And the guy, the other grown fish says, like, how's the water today? And the two young fish went by, and I'm like, what the hell is water? If you're in it all the time, you don't notice it. And so, as we continue to talk to our community, that's part of that community engagement, is that we speak. And now, I'm gonna call out Ashley, our coach, who has given us some useful information, and she said that anytime we're presenting things, it should be at a sixth-grade level, so that everybody can digest it. So, as we move forward, we just need to make sure that we continue to do that, so that everybody is actually a part of the conversation, and not just sitting in the room being smothered by big words. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Singh.
I know I've gone twice, but do you wanna go? Okay, so, just real quick, you gave, as you were speaking, I was like, oh, okay, so I'm looking at this slide that has one tool with two parts. I think what I'm, I think one thing you might consider is having a part three, which is related to those endgame things that I just listed out, like, how well does this, you know, save us money, create store neighborhood schools, create special programming that is accessible to all, and whatever my fourth thing was, what was my fourth one?
We have to watch YouTube later.
Yeah, to watch YouTube. Oh, yeah, the TEA stuff, okay, does this comply? Like, that would be a, at least aesthetically, it would seem like that has as much importance as the other two, but when I see something that's a tool, and it doesn't even address those issues, I get a little worried, you know what I'm saying? So, that's just kind of like, just an idea about how to kind of operationalize this alignment and just elevate the other things to the same level as, like, the FSA and ESA, right?
Thank you. Okay, Trustee Kitana?
Thank you. I really want to thank you, I know this is not easy work, and I don't envy where you are, and I'm sure you probably wouldn't rather be where I am either, so I guess we're on the same page. I really, I want to, to agree with Trustees Foster, Hunter, and Singh. You know, I, I grew up on the east side in the 23, and I got up at 6:00 AM to get on a bus to be at school in South Austin at the Ann Richard School by a little before 9:00 AM, and it was a privilege, and I will always be grateful for the education that I got. But it wasn't until I was older, much older, that I understood the concept of neighborhood schools, and I didn't realize that everybody didn't have to leave their neighborhood to get the things that they needed, basic things. I thought that that was how everybody was living their life, everybody just ran all around town to get all of the stuff that they needed. And, you know, where I grew up, we didn't have everything we needed in Capital Plaza, you know, it's just, it's just what it is. And so, as I think about our future and where we are now, I think about what my aunt would have wanted for me in school, what I want for my nieces and nephews who are in school, which is a place that invests in them, that values them and their families. And when I think about that, I think about having in Ann Richard's middle school or high school in every neighborhood, or in every neighborhood school. I want, you know, everyone to get the same education that I got, or have the same opportunity to excel and succeed, even if they have different challenges, and so, when I think about how to make that happen, it does require radical change, it does require this board to be brave. And I think about just even a baseline of what we want in every single school, that it doesn't matter if I live in Southwest Austin or Northeast Austin, I know that if I send my kid to a middle school, they're gonna get the same baseline education that I don't have to worry about, I don't have to move, I don't have to put my kid on a bus at 6:00 AM to get down to South Austin to get the education that she needs to go to college or be career-ready. And I, I'm not sure if that is a consolidation of resources, or if that is a reallocation of resources, which I think if it's the latter, that is where we have to be brave. But, you know, I believe we're here because people were kicking the can down the road in order to make some of our schools really, really great, but that comes with consequences, and now, we're dealing with that. And so, I hope that we can come up with a tool that doesn't kick stuff down the road, because we're just gonna be right back here, and as I see it, public education is for every kid, not just certain kids, and so, we should be making all of our decisions thinking about, you know, every kid on every side of the track, so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dea Uraviste.
So, one thing, listening to my colleagues on the dais here, I'm looking at Slide 6, it says, how should we, how should accountability affect our decisions? And, you know, kind of two sides of this, as I'm kind of thinking it out, you know, we've seen with the turnaround plans, the way that accountability is driving investment in schools that need it, and one of the concerns that comes up over and over and over again when I hear people talk about consolidation, and even when we were talking to Doby, Webb, and Burnett, those communities, is the idea of divesting from areas that actually need investment. And so, I'm wondering if we can look at that as an additional weighting, or, you know, when we look at that other area, if we're just closing things in the areas where we have Fs, we're actually investing less geographically in that area, whereas, you know, many of these areas that already have As, they don't necessarily need more investment. And so, you know, whether it's looking at, like, distance to an A-rated school, or, you know, how far those students would travel, I know transportation's been a piece in here. But I'm curious to hear more as we go through this process, you know, what weighting we can look at that ties into either geography or accountability in the sense of that, you know, I would look at this, and, you know, just looking at the map that, you know, has been gone around of the accountability scores, you know, geographically, those are areas that we would presumably be investing more if we had to do turnaround plans, if we get these scores, and so, I don't want closing the schools to just be a way to get out of having to do that investment piece, which I don't think is obviously the intention here. But, as we've learned from these communities, people are constantly saying, why weren't you doing more earlier, you know, we did have efforts ahead of time, but, you know, we can see that these areas need more investment, and so, you know, I would like to see that included in, in that, you know, that calculation as we're going. You know, we have this current assessment, and so, you know, it is fairly clearly geographically divided, and so, when we look at those plans, I think that bears some, some value in weighting on that, so that we're not actually pulling resources from areas that we've been, you know, presumably, you know, we're getting all the data that we need to be putting more into those areas, and so, when we do the cost savings, you know, that that's a long-term benefit, because, you know, that's also gonna just lead to migration of students, you know, geographically to the other side, you know, people are gonna move towards the A schools, or they're gonna get bussed towards the A schools, you know, how can we invest so that we're creating those A-rated schools where they're needed, so that, you know, so that people can have access to those locally?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's just kind of food for, for future conversation.
That's, that's the feedback we need, I mean, I think it's, you know, having studied these processes, having gone through it, there's a lot that we need to talk about now, so that at the end of it, we're still together. You know, the one thing that rips districts apart are going through things like this and not being together, so I hear being brave, we can be brave, we can do hard things, but I've also been there at eleven and a half hour with votes are taking place, and that is a very difficult place to be. And so, I just, I'm always gonna, you know, communicate, like, what I, how to do it, what we can do, take, learn from, and get input and adjust and refine, but I want to be honest about, you know, the fact that we still have to get through it, and if we don't get through it, then there'd be a lot of pain inflicted and nothing will be accomplished. And so, I think it's important that we all agree early on, you know, to Trustee Singh's point, you know, what is the endgame? What is the goal? And this is not gonna get us all the way there, you know, it, there, you can't, there's just, it's not, it's how we manage resources, it's the boundaries, it's the consolidation, it's gonna be two years from now, decisions that we make, but if we know what that endgame is, then we're always working towards something. But no, I think that's a, it's a question, it's something we've talked about, different ways to account for it, different controls that you can put, so that, you know, you're not creating that kind of strain within the school district, and yeah, I think it's great feedback, this is what we need it, so please share it.
Yeah, I'm kind of just repeating myself, just to make sure it's clear, you know, when we were talking to Doby and Webb and Burnett, you know, closure, restart, all those options, and, you know, there was a lot of concern that I was hearing about the effect of closing the school, and whether we're gonna lose ground in that area, and so, when I look at the accountability, and I see this, you know, question of how do, how do we incorporate it in there, I think that's a good one to tie into the geography and make sure that we have those A-rated schools equally accessible to people across the district, and if they're not there, you know, that's where we need to build them, we, you know, we need to make sure we're investing in those pieces, and so, when we go through that consolidation, you know, every campus we're closing is one that doesn't get a chance to be an A-rated campus, and when there's already several in the area, you know, the, to me, there's plenty of access there, whereas, you know, I look at another area and, and, you know, how do we ensure that those students are getting that investment, so?
And right now, you know, if we continue on this path with the constraints and the budget, you know, those schools, those schools, all of our schools are gonna get less every year, and I, we want all of our schools to, to be successful, right? And we certainly recognize that ratings are one thing, but there are many incredible things happening in all of our schools. And so, no, I, I hear you, I mean, that's, that's part of the challenge with navigating this process.
Thank you. More questions or comments?
Trustee Willie Chu. So, I think what's, what's super important is people sharing their experiences and getting to hear each other's experiences, and really level-set what's going on, because everyone comes from their, their own experiences and understanding, and, you know, that's, you know, I know this is still, we're trying, you know, it's gonna be a quicker process, but we're, we try to, you know, we're giving it some time, you need time to not be like in a fight or flight to actually be able to listen, so I think, like, level-setting with, with the history of what's going on, there are people who just moved here from New Jersey, they, they don't know any of our history, or maybe, you know, a lot of us lived in your part of town your whole life, and you have your experience, so I think being able, being able to listen, and I think, you know, when we're looking at those schools and the labels, a lot of it is the labels caused the movement, and, because when I get to go to these schools, so I know that they're excellent, I know that I would want to send my kid to any of the elementary schools I've walked into, they're so, they're so fun and joyful, and there are people who are, it's, it's because of, like, even our most recent policies where enrollment is so open, the Austin system came up, and if you're a parent, and you've gone through the pandemic, you've gone through all this trauma, and all you know is, like, it's your job to find the best thing for your kid, so when all the information you have is, this school has a, like, where do I wanna, well, of course, this, I wanna send my school to, kid to the A school, okay, which one's closest to me? And all our schools are really close together, they're really, really close, and so, that has created this problem where people haven't even visited their, their home campus, or some of our campuses are more used to tours and visitors and that expectation, and people aren't getting, getting let in, and they're driving past several schools, because we can't have, like, our, our computer be, like, online shopping, because that also puts, it puts pressure on parents, like, it, it feels like something you have to do to be, to be a good parent for, for a lot of people, so people need to know what our schools have to offer, and actually get, get to come inside and take that chance to, to really see what we're all about. And so, I'd also ask, you know, when we're looking at, we, we do have to de-risk this situation, because, so students can breathe and actually get to learn, and not be under the, okay, we need more data, we need more data, just to, like, make sure we're not gonna get all taken over, like, that's not healthy for, for kids, that's not healthy for their teachers, and that's why they have churn, because it's trauma and it's, and it's burnout, so it's the, the labels cause the perpetual labels, so we have to figure out how to let those schools breathe and be, I think, be really creative, like, what we're looking at, what is the makeup of schools? We've thrown around, like, EC through AIDS, we've turned around, thrown around lots of different stuff, and these, these modern schools can, we can do a lot of things. And so, just, I think one thing I'll ask when we're, like, listening to others' experiences, and I would say, take, I'd like everyone working on this to take the time to learn about, like, inclusive education, because these, they're not special education programs or units, like, students have individual education plans, and these, these buildings allow students to have more inclusive education, if we, and especially if we have money to staff that correctly. No student should have to move to a different campus because they have a disability, so I'd like to see that come out of, of this process, so, thank you.
Thank you. Additional? All right. All right. Um, thank you so much for this, the work, the update, and, and the work with our community so far and the work to come with our community. Um, so really appreciate the deep dives that are coming and, and look forward to seeing you in August. Um, thank you. So we will now move to the consent agenda. As a reminder for trustees, the consent agenda is considered neutral under law and store governance, but discussion on individual items is generally not considered student outcome time. Uh, the administration has requested that we pull item 11.1, the MOU between Austin ISD and the University of Texas Principal Leadership Academy for an abstention, uh, for a separate vote, so a trustee can abstain. And the administration apologizes for not making this adjustment prior to posting. We also want to mention, the board is being asked to consider item 12.2, the Student Success Guide, which is the Austin ISD's student code of conduct. Um, we need to approve that each year before the school year starts. We will consider approval tonight, so the administration may start sharing this with families. And due to legislative changes, it is likely this guide will need to be updated, and the administration will bring those changes back in August after receiving further guidance from Tasby and TEA. And, um, I believe we also will likely have this similar for, um, a cell phone policy, is my understanding, also in response to some legislative changes. And, um, we have our own cell phone policy. Um, it's item 12.10, um, on the agenda, so that families, students are starting the school year, teachers are starting the school year with a policy in place, so we're not abruptly taking that out of students' hands in the middle of the year. So, um, we'll be bringing some modifications to these back as well. Um, so trustees, are there any consent items anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? Understanding that 11.1 has been pulled by the administration. All right. Um, do I have a motion, Secretary Gonzalez, to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, I move to approve consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.5, 8.1 through 8.5, 9.1 through 9.4, 10.1 through 10.4, um, 11.2, and 12.1 through 12.13.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez and a second by Trustee De Uro Yost to approve a, a consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.5, 8.1 through 8.5, 9.1 through 9.4, 10.1 through 10.4, 11.2, 12.1 through 12.13. Um, do we have, um, oh, is there any discussion? Pardon? Yes, Trustee Hunter.
Very quickly, I ask a question, and I, I think it might have been answered, but it got lost in the email transition. I had asked a question about, uh, 12.13, and I didn't see it in the backup. I had, it, it's for number two on the PD. District employees, um, who regularly interact with students would be receiving that training on number two. And I had asked if that included security personnel, like, um, the folks that they deal with kids most often, right? And so, having those skills would be very beneficial to them. So, not now, but if they could answer my question, the administration would like actually resend it, or I don't know what happened to it, it's gone.
It was, yeah. Uh, we'll, we'll find it. If not, I may shoot you a text to send it.
Okay, perfect, and thank you. And then, um, I just wanna, um, ask to direct the administration and other people to 12.12. Trustee Singh's question is something we need to consider before we have to consider it, right? Um, to be ahead of that, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Singh.
So, um, just FYI, I, and thank you, I did see the changes, um, to the Student Success Guide that included AI. Um, so let it be known that in 2025 is the first time AI was mentioned in any student success guide. So anyway, it's there, and I know that we're working on a more robust policy, but at least it's mentioned here. So I really appreciate the staff, um, making that change. Thanks, Dr. Williams.
Yeah, thank you for that. I know that's been, um, a discussion for a long time, and I know we have a committee working on that, so thank you for that. Yes, appreciate the clarity, and I know a lot of our, it has been well incorporated into a lot of people's lives, and we owe our students some clarity and guidance, um, as they navigate that, so thank you. All right, any additional discussion? Okay, I will now reread the motion. Having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez, a second by Trustee De Uro Yost to approve items 7.1 through 7.5, uh, 8.1 through 8.5, 9.1 through 9.4, 10.1 through 10.4, 11.2, 12.1 through 12.13. Um, all in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Um, Secretary Gonzalez, drive a motion to approve item 11.1.
Yes, I move that we approve item 11.1.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, do we have any discussion on this item? Thank you, having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez, a second by Trustee De Uro Yost to approve item 11.1, memorandum of understanding between Austin ISD and the University of Texas Principal Leadership Academy. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? And the motion passes by seven in favor, none opposed, and one abstaining with Trustee Foster abstaining. Um, we have two additional items for a separate vote. Uh, Trustee Gonzalez, Secretary Gonzalez, do I have a motion?
Uh, yes, uh, regarding item 13.1, I move to approve item 13.1, rescind the proposed termination of a professional employee during a term contract, uh, JG, excuse me.
Okay, and, and just to clarify, do we have any trustees who would like to talk about this in executive session before we take a vote? That has become our custom to have that option. Just want to be sure before we move forward. Okay. Um, do we have a second on Trustee Gonzalez's motion?
Second.
Okay, um, do we have any discussion on this item? Okay, having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez, a second by Trustee Hunter, all in favor of 13.1, rescind the proposed termination of a professional employee during a term contract, JG. Please raise your hand. And the motion passes by all those on the dais. Secretary Gonzalez, do I have a motion to approve item 13.2?
Yes, I move to approve item 13.2, adoption of the 2025-26 Proposed General Fund Food Service and Debt Service Budgets.
Right, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez, a second by Vice President Willie Chu to approve item 13.2. Oh, do we have any discussion on this item?
Just want to say another big thank you. I hope you're gonna celebrate tonight, if this goes the way we hoped.
Um, any further discussion? All right, having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez, a second by Vice President Willie Chu to approve item 13.2, the adoption of the 2025-2026 Proposed General Fund Food Service and Debt Service Budgets. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion to approve our budget passes by all those on the dais. Thank you so much. I see some celebration. Thank you, very, very, uh, hard-earned celebration. Thank you so much. Um, appreciate that. Um, so, we will return, um, to do some other votes and to close the meeting. I'm moving it forward in my script. Um, we will now recess the open meeting at 9:11 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551 and .074, 551 .072, 551 .073, 551 .087, 551 .076, 551 .0821, and 551 .071. When we're finished with the executive session, we will briefly return to the open session to take action on the transfer appeals and to formally, uh, formally adjourn the meeting. The action and adjournment will be recorded and will be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you so much for joining us, and have a good evening. Um, we will now reconvene in the open meeting at 1:24 AM. Um, and, uh, we will now, um, return to open session to make a decision on agenda item 16.1, a transfer appeal, um, for ZB. And do I have a motion on agenda item 6.1, the transfer appeal on behalf of ZB?
Yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the appeal.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, do we have any discussion? All right, having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez, a second by Trustee Quintana. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by all on the dais. Um, we will now move to item 6.2. Uh, do I have a motion on agenda item 6.2, the transfer appeal on behalf of TB?
Uh, yes, I move to affirm the decision of the superintendent and deny the, uh, transfer request.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, do we have any discussion? Um, okay, having a motion by Secretary Gonzalez, a second by Trustee Quintana. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Um, thank you very much. Um, and, uh, Secretary Gonzalez, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Uh, the meeting is adjourned at 1:25 AM. Thank you, um, to everyone who's here.